This is me.
Good evening. It is now 4:38 PM in the Red Bull City Council meeting for the city of Compton. Tuesday, September 16, 2025 is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember DeHart, Councilmember Spicer.
Here.
Councilmember Bowers, Councilmember Darden.
Here.
Mayor Sharif.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Will you please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart and begin. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments for closed session?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to be going into closed session of our Public Employees' Performance Evaluation. The City Controller, Government Code Section 54957B1. And a conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.5 and 54956.9D1, Decole Hill versus the City of Compton, case number 23CMCV00222. And a conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.5 and 54956.9D1, Fred Brown versus the City of Compton, case number 23CMCV00149. And a conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.5 and 54956.9D1, Adriana Sherram versus the City of Compton, case number 22CMCV00612. Is there a motion to convene to close session?
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember DeHart, Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers, Councilmember Darden.
Yes.
Mayor Sharif.
Yes.
You can recess the closed session at 4:41 PM.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Motion to reconvene.
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember DuHart, Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers, Councilmember Darden. Mayor Sharif.
Yes.
You reconvene at 6:27 PM.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Reporting out of closed session, direction was given to the City Controller to provide the council with specific information. Said information will be received by the council, by all council members, once received, but no more reportable action was taken. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now we move to public comments on agenda items and non-agenda matters.
The first speaker is Alonzo Williams.
Good evening, everyone, City Council. My name is Alonzo Williams. I'm the president of the Compton Entertainment Chamber of Commerce. And first of all, I made a couple of notes here. I want to make a quick thank you to the City Manager's Office for allowing us to coordinate the first Friday event that took place on the first Friday from June until September. Also, I want to thank Mr. Bowles, he's not here today, and the City Council, and the City Manager's Office for participating in the prostate cancer awareness walk we're doing this week at Compton College. September is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and more Black and Brown men die from prostate cancer than anyone else. So we're doing a prostate cancer awareness walk this Saturday at Compton College with free prostate cancer testing on site. So I just wanted to thank the city for participating, the City Council, the City Manager's Office, and Mr. Bowles especially for being one of the sponsors of the event. And at that being said, I'm all done. Thank you very much, folks. Have a great, best day.
Thank you. The next speaker is Fidel.
Fidel Marquez, District One. City manager, he's not here today. There was a lawsuit granted, $450,000 that the residents have no clue. We need some information for transparency reasons of who this individual was, why. That's a lot of money, $150,000. Also, two quarters, the city has gained money on investments. I asked this before. When has the budget been amended for accountability reasons for this $3.5 million and $10 million? The budget needs to be amended for accountability, and the city does not do that. Also, I want to speak on an article I read last week that touched me. World Oil. Couple of council people received money, campaign donations. That refinery killed the majority of my family. I was raised practically across the street. My mother was raised across the street from that refinery. Her nine siblings, mother, father, all died of cancer. My father is a two-year cancer survivor. Everybody in that immediate area has died of cancer. And you guys send letters of support. How are you guys making the community any safer? There's an elementary school that I went to, Thomas Jefferson, down the street. There's kids that play and inhale all those toxins. What do you think their life expectancy will be? My mother got a rare cancer that it took 27 doctors from around the world to have a forum. When they asked me her upbringing, where, if there was refineries, when I told them, they stopped asking questions. That let me know that that refinery killed her. Her sister died at 40 of a rare disease, scleroderma. And she was the only third person in the whole world to get that rare disease. Come to find out, another resident's mother had the same disease.
The next speaker is Tanya.
Tanya Lewis, First District. The treasurer's not here, but I appreciate him telling us last week that we now have $10 million. And he explained that he couldn't do anything with the money, which we know is you guys. It goes to you guys, which is usually five people and the city manager. So I want to go back a year ago, where we had a meeting at the chamber, and it was the budget, no, it was grant money that had to be spent. And we all suggested something like where the money should go, to those that needed their house painted, if they needed a fence. We never heard anything about where that money went. So what I want you guys to do is, when you decide what you're going to do with the $10 million, write it down, or have a meeting again with us so we could give you our opinion where this money is going to go. Because it's not just five people in the city manager, it's the whole community. They need to come here or go to the chamber and tell us where you think the money's going to go, and then we can tell you where we want it to go. Because, see, you guys get together and you spend the money, and it's all gone, and nothing's really done for the city. So we need to know. Another thing, it's going to be another lawsuit on your hands if they do not get rid of the concrete on Great Street. I don't have the address, but Ms. DuHart knows where this tree was. They took the tree down last year, last year, I think. And the sidewalk is standing up like a foot. Anybody walking at night can get hurt. And what's going to happen? Someone's going to sue Compton. And then we have to spend some more money on the accident that I'm telling you today it needs to be seen about tomorrow. Get someone on it before someone trip and, you know, their teeth fall out, break their leg or something. Get on.
The next speaker is Vanessa.
I want to talk about World Oil also, but I'm just going to give some figures since all of you have received EBT donations from them. You have Darden, Emma Sharif, $1,500. I mean, this is a kind of little, this is the peanut money. It's not even peanut money. I don't know what it is. Then you have another $1,038 from Lily Darden, and you're talking about modifying an environmental hazard. And that's one of the things I've been discussing a long time. Too many poor communities have all these environmental waste companies sitting right next door to people's homes. That's why they're dying like they're dying. We had Alcoa that sat over there next to Vanguard for years, and I bet you there's thousands of people who have had cancer that have graduated from Vanguard. I used to work a garden over there. We had to stop because the water was contaminated, the dirt was contaminated. So I know the contamination. Why are we trying to modify something? You can't modify that. You have to tear it down, and you probably have to go 100 feet. And you can do other things with it. Why do we have to keep that? And donations for your campaigns? $1,000? $1,500? That's sickening. You guys should know better. But obviously, you don't. So now we're going to have to just throw you out of your seats because you're that ignorant. You would sit up here and take a donation from a company that's sitting up here killing our citizens. We cannot keep allowing that. And it's a constant thing that's happened all over the country, and this is something we've been fighting. But you're not listening. You're not listening to what's going on. The citizens have spoken. We don't want it. It's just like all this housing. You have housing sitting on flood zones where King David is. You're going to get a lawsuit there. You have a lot of lawsuits coming because you're stupid and you're not listening, you're not doing research. But you politicians, that's what you want to do, and you're not even decent politician. You're raggedy, you know, and you just need to just walk away. Just walk away. You know you're wrong. Just leave. We're sick of you anyway. I'm sick of looking at all three of you. Get out of here. You know, and it doesn't make sense. You have people dying, and you think it's okay, sitting up there with that kind of mess. Put something into our schools. Put money into parks. Let's do green building, not things that's going to kill off our community and destroy it. We already have enough of that. Hell, we fighting an administration just killed off 317,000 Black women's jobs. This is the kind of stuff we got to fight? Then I got to come.
The next speaker is Mr. Kenzie Jones.
Good afternoon. Wow, we got a lot of money in Compton now. When we going to put some in this city, like that park? I'm glad you got the fence done, but the grass is dead. Thousands of people go down Long Beach Boulevard and look at that park. It's really ridiculous. How come we just couldn't put something for the seniors to go there and sit down? They can walk around, get flowers, green grass like Long Beach. It's the city of Long Beach. You have no parks like Compton that's dead. Speaking of dead people, do y'all know why Yujima Village went down? They destroyed that place? It was contaminated. I'm going to the doctor right now and getting tested for that. That's why Yujima Village is not here anymore. The county bought that place for $1. So city of Compton want to look beautiful. What do we have in city of Compton to bring people here? Once again, we do not have a restaurant. We don't have nothing but fast food here that's killing us. If we don't put some money in, well, half of the people don't live here, no way, so I can understand that. Half of you guys, y'all don't have to worry about that when y'all get out your house in the morning. You don't have to look at what we look at. You don't have to look at the young ladies still walking the streets now, we not doing nothing about them. And that's pitiful. Paramount don't have that. Carson don't have that, but Compton do. I wonder why? Why? We're not helping this city. We got, all this money is going somewhere, but it's not going in the city. It really doesn't make any sense to me, though. I'm serious about this. And you want to make the city look better, but what are we doing for the city? When the last time we put up a traffic light? You go down Long Beach Boulevard, pass the 710, they got almost six traffic lights to control that traffic. to control that traffic. On the corner of Landra and Long Beach Boulevard, you can leave a Landra and do 110 until you get the green leaf. Because we don't have, Daniel, hell, what's so bad about it? You have the kids going across that street right there. Just had another two more accidents there the other night. We not thinking about that. You have a car wash, you have a sushi place. Also, you have the ladies that taken over that corner right there too. It doesn't make that much sense, that many accidents in one area. I know y'all getting a report. It doesn't make any sense. One of them kids get killed, we really going to be in trouble. But all this money is going somewhere, but it's not going into the city.
The next speaker is Gabe Holbert.
Good evening, council. My name is Gabe Holbert and I'm with Home Run Financing, who are a property assessed, clean energy, PACE administrator that finances energy efficiency, water conservation, disaster resiliency, home improvements for property owners voluntarily through their property taxes in over 340 California communities, including your neighbors, LA, Long Beach, Paramount, Gardena, Torrance, Inglewood, Hawthorne, and countless others throughout LA County and the state. Thanks for your time this evening. California property owners continue to face higher temperatures, rising energy and utility costs, and drought, creating a need to adapt their homes to properly address these growing challenges. Demand for measures such as solar panels, insulation, efficient HVAC systems, water conservation improvements, and other measures to increase the efficiency and resiliency of their homes has increased despite these upgrades being out of reach due to high price tags and limited access to affordable financing to pay for them. PACE is a transformational public policy in place for over a decade that solves this problem. Unlike other traditional methods of financing that require large down payments and have high variable interest rates, PACE provides these improvements with no upfront cash required and at fixed affordable interest rates repaid through a special property tax assessment. All these benefits are offered at zero cost to taxpayers. PACE delivers results not only for property owners, but also for small businesses that step up to complete the improvements. As a result of PACE, over $2.71 billion of private capital has been invested into California's local economies, creating countless jobs and opportunities in them. Since AB 1284 was passed in 2017, the PACE industry has delivered best-in-class consumer protections, including rigorous underwriting standards, financial disclosures, verifying the ability to pay, among other measures. Compton residents had access to PACE through the Golden State Finance Authority's program. However, their only administrator, the Y Green Energy Fund, pulled out of the California market, leaving Compton residents with no other options for PACE. California's statewide communities development authority, CSCDA's Open PACE Program, has three providers, including my company, Home Run Financing, operating in over 340 local jurisdictions throughout California. By joining CSCDA and their Open PACE with the resolution at a future council meeting, you can again give Compton homeowners access to PACE. Numerous California cities recently have taken action to give residents access to PACE, including your neighbors in Hawthorne and Calabasas this past summer. We'd love to discuss how together we can work together to bring PACE back to Compton residents and make vital home improvements more accessible to your community by passing a CSCDA Open PACE Resolution at an upcoming meeting. Thanks for your time this evening.
Lisa McLennan.
Good evening. My name's Lisa McLennan. First, I want to apologize for the last time I was here. It was my first time, so I didn't know proper etiquette. So Madam Mayor, I want to acknowledge you first and our Congressman and everyone else here. First, I want to be here, I'm here because of the Water Aerobics Program that we've been having. Thank you for extending it, first of all. And my sister, who's still working right now, asked me to show up again. The showing of the people that are still attending is amazing. We're hoping that we can get it a little bit longer, if possible. That would be greatly appreciated, even if there's some type of dollars that we have to contribute despite whatever anybody else is saying. We're willing to do that because one of the ladies that left wanted me to reiterate physically. It's helping those that cannot exercise on solid ground and work out, we're able to do it in the water, able to accomplish a lot of goals, lose the weight that they can't lose because of knees that are hurt, body parts that have been replaced and they're trying to rejuvenate and different things like that. And it's not just one person doing it. There's lots of people and they help each other. They smile together, laugh together, you know, go home together, you know, all of that. And it's a good thing, a positive thing for our community in the midst of all the negative chaos. You know, I want to also say I appreciate the graffiti effort. You know, I, things happen, you know, but if we all come together on one accord, I believe that we can make things happen on little steps. This project right here is little steps to show that we are working towards a positive goal for our city in Compton. And we've been here since 68. So I appreciate any and everything you guys can do for our city. Thank you.
The last speaker is Lynn Boone.
Lynn Boone, City of Compton. I hate when Ms. Sharif says the last speaker. When by the Brown Act, people that are here are supposed to be able to speak even if they don't sign up. The, the oil company, that place has not been permitted for so long, but it's still been operating. And for you guys to actually send a letter that you are saying that it's okay, you can tell you either don't live in Compton or you don't live in that area. But once the wind starts blowing, it affects everybody. I spoke with an attorney and he's saying he's going to have those kids at that school tested. Okay? Because it is ridiculous. They are right there in those fumes. And I don't understand the school board even allowing that. But people just want to let you know it's election time and they're going to take contributions from anybody, even if the devil comes up. You know, but it's our chance, it's the people of Compton's chance to make a change and make a change in the right direction. We've had these same people up here, some of them for five years, some of them even longer. And you know what they're going to do. They don't want to listen to you, number one. Don't want to hear what you have to say. Presentations used to be a public hearings where the public is allowed to speak on it. The city treasurer put on a good presentation, but people should have been able to ask questions. Because you guys don't know. You don't ask the questions that the people want to hear. You know, I just say it's sad. And I've been saying for a long time, they take money out of this city so easily. They use the parks. They use other areas. And if they're amending the budget for that. And one good example, please drive by Ludus Park. Earlier this year, you guys signed a resolution for $697,000, over half a million dollars. And that park still looks exactly the same. But that's just one example. We still have brown water in this city. And the people talk and talk about the streets, but it's not just the streets anymore. It's the entire city. And you're putting up these little shacks that you're calling condominiums or townhouses or whatever. But we don't have enough stores for the people that live here now to shop.
Madam City Council.
Madam Mayor, we move to the regular agenda of the city manager's report.
Mayor and Council.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a presentation by our grants compliance manager, Mr. Tremel Woods.
Madam Mayor, City Council, members of the community. As a grants compliance manager for two years and five months thus far, this evening, we would like to show you a presentation of what the grants department has accomplished with programs and projects thus far. So when I became grants compliance manager, one of my initiatives was to improve our park programs and equipments. We facelift Wilson Park and Ludus Park where we spent over $1.5 million. So with that type of investment, we as a team, from management to residents to city employees, really enjoy seeing kids and people of the community access those parks, see the new slides, see the new playground equipment, and enjoy themselves. So let's highlight three of our housing rehab projects. One, let's start with Kimberly, where she got a new facelift on her new remodeled kitchen.
The grant has helped my family tremendously. What it was before to what it is now, I'm totally grateful. And for the grant program, it's not a fluke, it's not a hoax. It is really real. So if it comes back around for Compton residents, please, 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 do what you need to do for Compton to help you, because they did it for me.
Project number two, let's go with Serrano, where she received new windows throughout the home hall and a new roof. And last but not least, let's focus on Cassandra Grant, who had an existing exterior that got new plaster and paint and also a new roof. So not only do we do park improvement projects, housing rehabilitation projects, but we also do a little economic development. Where we rolled out our 2020 COVID-related small business grant, where we awarded 10 recipients, but we are focused on two right now. Barbarisms, let's hear from DC.
The city grant has helped us improve our visibility. The area we're in is kind of like tucked away, so it's small. So one of the things we were able to do is to put this huge barbarism to shop sign outside and lit it up in red and so that the community could see us. And my plan and hope was that you could see it all the way from the top floor to Compton Courthouse. And we also did a couple of other campaigns where we were able to actually, it creates our social media visibility as well. Been able to get a little bit more back to the community and take a little bit more time to show up at those community events and do more because we had a buffer and able to, you know, pay some of our barbers and do other things as well too. So we're really grateful. We hope to continue to do more and City of Compton stood tall with us and we're going to continue to stand tall with the city.
Ellis Aquatics was one of our small business recipients, where he received $25,000 to pay outstanding invoices, to bulk up inventory, to purchase vital equipment. As of today, that business is now debt-free, stable, and sales have grown. And that's what you would like to see in the City of Compton. In addition to economic development, park improvement projects, housing rehab, the grants department also focused on crime awareness and crime prevention. The city issued new lock cops at various locations. And the purpose of the lock cops were to deter crime and prevent human trafficking and alert law enforcement of any illegal activity. In addition to all these projects I listed before, one of the biggest projects that we offer is assistance to nonprofits. For an example, the Makers Hub that offers workshops every Saturdays for residents to rent tools, purchase tools, or even learn a new skill. While all these programs and projects are great, let's continue to move forward and push forward. Special shops, Mayor and Council, and also our executive management from the city managers to both our assistant city managers. To our grants management team, thank you for your support. Let's go, Compton.
First, let me say thank you for the presentation. I think that gives us an overview of some of the things that we actually do, you actually doing there in the grants department. Really want to thank you guys for the work that you're doing and for actually making a lot of things possible as far as with our residents, some that they cannot afford to do certain things as far as their homes. And so this is truly a beginning. Yeah, like I said, just a beginning. And I know there's a lot more that we will be able to do later. And I really want to say again, thank you so much for the presentation.
Mr. Woods, that was a great presentation, very informative, man. So thank you so much for putting that together. It was professionally done and again informative, reminding the residents that we are actually taking care of the community. And it all starts with, with one of those things that it starts with the grant department. So thank you for your dedication and partnership with the city.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Darden.
Thank you, Mr. Tremel, for that wonderful presentation. I would like to know, when is the next phase that you'll be able to grant further funding for residents and businesses?
So as it relates to our housing rehab, we actually just closed the second phase last month. So we're reviewing applicants. It'd be another wave of 10 applicants, where we invest in roughly $350,000 towards rehabs. We closed phase two of the small business grant. So thus far, we've awarded over 22 businesses. So that's an investment over $650,000 that the city has contributed to small businesses.
Thank you.
No problem. Oh, so I'm sorry. So as it relates to park improvements, parks that we have done, that's been completed, Wilson Park, Ludus Park was actually completed. Residents stated that it wasn't completed, it's done. Caesar Chavez, Kelly Park, and Tucker Park is actually in progress.
When you say Kelly Park is in progress, what does that mean?
No, Tucker, Tucker Park is in progress. So they've tearing it down, all new playground equipment and shelter.
And I'm going to ask you again, and I'll keep asking this question. What about Kelly Park? When will that start and what do you guys plan on doing with the building?
I don't know if there's plans for the buildings, but the playground was completed last year.
Yeah, and I asked this before because right now, if you take a look at the building, it's in very poor condition. And I just keep asking about this over and over again because I'm wondering how much longer would it take before we take a look at these other parks that, in these other districts that need to be done? And because in Kelly, it's only one park in our fourth district that really need any upgrades, and that is Kelly. And I'm just wondering when, if you guys can give us a date and time of when you anticipate actually having the work done up there at Kelly? If you could get back with us, I really would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Madam City Council.
Madam Mayor, we move to council comments.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start with Councilman Spicer from District Two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few events that's coming up. I just wanted to make some announcements for, this started yesterday, it's going to October 24th. This is the WERC, the Worker Education and Resource Center. It'll be returning here at the Dollar High with another life-changing opportunity. WERC peer personnel training and placement programs helps job-seeking individuals connect with opportunities that support others in that, in their journey. For more information, you can contact Miguel Rodriguez. His number is 213-585-8764. Or you can email my liaison at T, as in TomSpears@ComptonCity.org. September 27th is the Nonprofit Basics Workshop. It continues Wednesday, September, September 27th here at the Dollar High Community Center between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Session will cover board members and dream, dream team recruitments, engagement and legal roles. And for more information, contact my liaison, TSpears@ComptonCity.org. The BLAST Project starts on October 1st. This is Business Leadership Accounting, Structure, and Tax. This is a 10-week small business accelerator. We're accepting 25 small businesses. In that 10-week course, you will receive leadership, business structure, whether you're in a nonprofit, LLC, or in a corporation. We also have a business accounting, business tax, and again, business structure. That's going to start Wednesday, October 1st. It's going to go until December 10th at the end of the 10-week. At the end of the 10-week course, each business will have an opportunity to receive $300 to go towards their Compton business license, as well as matching up to $100 to open up their BMO business bank account. Also, there will be a pitch competition at the end of the 10 weeks, and business has the opportunity to win an additional $2,000 for their small business. This is for all small businesses in the city of Compton. Small business would require you to be under 10 employees. And again, you can go to my social media, you can click the link, you have to register to be a part. We only have room for 25 businesses. And lastly, I want to thank Innovative Playgrounds, I want to thank Parks and Recs, Dior Sunset and L7 for all being a part of the ribbon cutting for the new playground at Ludus Park yesterday. Nice turnout. I think we have the best playground in the city. So again, thank you to Innovative Playgrounds for addressing our concerns. And to add to that, this is the first and only all-inclusive park in the city of Compton. So if you have any children that are struggling with physical, whether they be in wheelchairs, crutches, or any kind of physical disability, this playground is perfect for that child. There is a two-parent, there's a parent swing, so you can swing with your little one. There's a merry-go-round, there's a situation for someone that might be in a wheelchair. So this is like, it's a perfect and flawless playground. So again, thank you to Innovative Playgrounds for partnering with the city of Compton. That concludes my announcements. You all have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Councilwoman Darden?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, September 10th, I attended the senior barbecue lunch organized and sponsored by the Commission on Aging. It was a fun event, and I would like to extend special thanks to the ladies of the commission, including Carolyn Ward, Delores Holbrook, Earlene Diggs, and Barbara Thompson for being such gracious hosts. On yesterday, September 15th, I attended the Public Safety Commission meeting. It was very informative. The fire chief and his staff presented some updates on the city's emergency operation plan and the hazardous mitigation plan that has been improved by the state and federal government. Also, Ms. Tracy Jordan, she's on the Oversight Commission, and she was here and gave a lot of informative information, so it was a great event. On Thursday, September 18th, I will take advantage of it and attend the complimentary UCLA Anderson Forecast, offering an economic overview for government leaders. This workshop will give local government leaders nonpartisan research-based projections about the economy, such as employment trends, housing, inflation, GDP growth, et cetera, to guide budgeting, physical planning, and policy priorities. I look forward to attending this workshop and will bring back a report to the community. On Saturday, September 20th, from 10:00 AM to noon, I am conducting another town hall meeting at Kelly Park, 2319 East Caldwell Street here in the city of Compton. The city presenters include city manager's office, the LA Sheriff's Office, Republic Service, Community Improvement Services, Community Development, Grants Department, and Recreation Department. On Saturday, the 20th, will be the 22nd Annual Veteran Stand Down, and it's taking place at 700 North Bullis Road. This is a three-day event, including employment assistance, housing assistance, legal assistance, medical and vision exams, mental health counseling, clothing and hygiene kits, showers and haircuts, hot meals, and much more. And for more information, you may contact Lesteen Johnson, Compton Chamber of Commerce, Also, on Saturday, the 20th, the Compton National Council of Negro Women will be presenting their 2025 fashion show and luncheon here at Dollar High Community Center, celebrating advocates for higher education. I commend the group for their commitment in empowering women of African descent, strengthening families, and uplifting our community through education, economic opportunity, health, and civic engagement. Your leadership continues to inspire and shape future generations. I also want to announce, and I guess I don't need to, because Mr. Lonzo Williams already announced about the annual prostate cancer, but thank you to Councilman Jonathan Bowers for sponsoring this vital community health awareness event. The South Park gate is now repaired and operational, and I'm recommending that we check to make sure that it is closed daily to prevent overnight intruders. I want to close with in memory of a longtime Compton resident, Mr. Guilford Jenkins, who passed away. He was also the nephew of Nellie Barnett, and also a long, she is also a longtime resident here in the city of Compton. And as always, I say, we got to keep Compton a safe, clean, and friendly city at all times. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. On Friday, September 12th, my office co-hosted the first annual Suicide and Substant Abuse candlelight vigil. It was a powerful evening where our community came together to share testimonies on our loved ones and uplift one another in solidarity and support. On Saturday, September 13th, I hosted my monthly Compton clergy collaboration meeting. We had meaningful discussion on the MLK Hospital campaign and began planning upcoming holiday events. That campaign regarding MLK is to make sure that we do everything we can to keep that hospital open. The hospital is having some challenges, and we're really just letting people know that we need to really do everything we can to keep the hospital in our community. And I want to thank our clergy leaders for their continued partnership and commitment to the well-being of our city. On Thursday, September 25th, from here at Dollar High, the city of Compton, in collaboration with Compton NAACP, will host a town hall meeting with the Los Angeles District Attorney Nathan Hodgman. This will mark the first time an elected district attorney has held a town hall here in Compton, and we look forward to this important community dialogue. And we invite all of you to please come out and participate. On Saturday, October 4th, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, at the MLK Monument, my office will host our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, an afternoon filled with art, music, culture, and community. If you're interested in being a vendor, showcasing your talent, or entering salsa contests, please contact my liaison at 310-605-5662. We hope you'll join us for this vibrant celebration. This evening, I would like to adjourn our meeting in memory of Umar Hakeem Day. Umar was a dedicated community leader and activist whose work touched countless lives. As the executive director of ILM Foundation, he spearheaded programs that fed families, mentored youth, and created opportunities for those most in need. Through initiatives like Commensary and Day, he brought dignity and hope to people experiencing homelessness, and he was a tireless advocate for interfaith unity and civic engagement. The city of Compton honors his remarkable contributions and lasting legacy. We extend our heartfelt condolences to his family and loved ones. And before closing, I just want to remind the community about the special election that's coming up on November 4th. There will be, and voters will be asked to approve Prop 50. I really hope that you get all that information in regards to how that may impact our city, not only our city, but all the cities here, in regards to these maps that we're looking at. They have redrawn their maps to boost the GOP's odds of maintaining, that's what is happening with our president and the administration that we are under now. And they have redrawn their maps to boost the GOP's odds of maintaining its majority in the US House with five more seats. And voters will weigh in on whether to set aside the congressional maps drawn for four years ago by an independent redistricting commission and replace them temporarily for the next three election cycles with lines that favor Democratic communities. So we have a lot, and our governor's working hard to make the necessary adjustments to even the playing field in response to what happened in Texas. We want to give the American people a fair chance, and that just has not been happening under our current federal administration. So we asking you to go to the polls and vote. I know that a lot of us will say we went to the polls and voted in November. Yes, we ask you to go to the polls and vote. I'm not telling you how to vote, but I'm asking you to please go to the polls and cash your vote on November 4th. However you decide to vote is really up to you, but this is important for us to always make sure that we're at the polls voting. On that note, I would like to say, I want to thank you for your continued dedication to the city of Compton. Let's keep lifting each other up, staying engaged, and working together towards a stronger community. Wishing you all a safe and peaceful evening, and we see you next Tuesday. Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember DeHart, Councilmember Spicer,
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers, Councilmember Darden,
Yes.
Mayor Sharif,
Yes.
You adjourn at 7:13 PM.
Thank you.